Good morning, everybody. I'm here with the director of the board. Today, I'm going to call together for this for the greater of the clarity that we're following what is a public servant with all of our senior leaders to build our heart sound and to protest or say or force anyone in the world is. We can share the thoughts today as touches of life and can feel through the same ear to get a good and best in the bar if you seek for the best course of action to save the person if it's today especially on the show this public has. We trust that all of our efforts are down by our hands and that it will be done. We would like to tell you this is a slam iron.
House Bill number five three zero four.
It's a bill for a hundred people's bill. It's a bill to title the the current hospital in the city of Antipolo. The province of Antipolo. It's quite a... We have about a million people. We have about four hundred fifty thousand to five hundred fifty six hundred and waters. It's a lot of people to find a hospital in Antipolo City. So, we have many statistics of the hospital that's around the town of Totoque, the hospital that's around Casalita. It's the hospital that's around Casalita for Rodriguez. So, we have many statistics to report for the cost. It's because if there's any cost that the province has to pay for this, it would be very hard to find something to change the situation. So, we think that it has really been a special idea for a long since it's a hospital for the city. And in our city. The government of Antipolo has used around facilities that are used at the next to confirm that they don't sit without a telephone. If I can identify my name and look at it in the video where we can put the door of the door. The hospital is not so normal. But the important thing is that it's far more complicated than it is in Antipolo City. So, I think that the government can see more than what requires support on this matter. It's looking for the help of the state that has the capacity to help us in this area in the case of the hospital, Mr. Chairman.
Good morning, everybody. May I recognize the official and the president of that? My name is Eric and I serve at around the different health centers. And this is kind of a bookie. From the office of the head of the particular department of health. And of course, I am the chief of the department of health. I'm just going to give you and some details. And I'd like to talk to the first person and to the department.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We now have the time for a study and then a conference. And this is the hospital. The uh when Gatsa when Gatsa was established in the 1990s, I think it was about the when Gatsa was the hospital. Uh the chief of the administration of the hospital. Uh other subject parties that are in the job actually are finally made which is expected to be a very strong. So, we have the final year. We have no objection to establish that also the hospital was a temporary. But we did the decision for the other consideration to move from of the business plan. They have started to investigate the issues for appropriate patients. And they found that they don't have to see the patients. It is a very critical idea for point critical for the hospital events is not accurate to the standards of the state of the city of Antipolo. And so, they have to move to the board to buy the authority. Such a message will happen to the city of San Antonio area. Look at the doctor and the doctor on the medical hospital in the downtown. The assets now are in the for the duration of the medical hospital in Antipolo. The article by the hospital hospital on the condition of the hospital in Antipolo. So, I want to thank you.
So, it really does not service the needs of Antipolo. They are expected by the province to take care of our own resources. And our resources do not allow us to operate a tertiary hospital at this time. So, the city is, of course, willing to support whatever activities the Department of Health is there. But we believe it is proper and it is more appropriate that the Department of Health be taking the lead in establishing this hospital, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Honorable Puno. May we now recognize Dr. Voltaire Guadalupe, Officer in Charge Director of the Calabar Zone?
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chair. With regards to the proposal, Antipolo, of course, we know is the most populous city in Rizal with over nine hundred thousand residents, almost one million, actually, as Honorable Puno mentioned. And the population far exceeds the capacity of its existing hospitals. A level three hospital is with specialties. Subspecialties is critical to meet meet the need for the expanding, continuously expanding population, especially for high burden diseases. We we know for a fact that Rizal Province and the whole of Rizal consistently is a consistent source of patients for the hospitals in Metro Manila. And in establishing a tertiary hospital in Antipolo, we would be effectively decongesting not just three of the main hospitals in Metro Manila, namely among Rodriguez, East Avenue, Kell's, Kirino, and Rizal Medical Center. It is a very strategic as its location is a prime site for a referral, especially of the uptown municipalities of Rizal Province. The data from Calabar Zone and Rizal highlight an increasing need for complicated treatment, treatment of complicated cases of trauma, maternal and neonatal complications, cardiovascular diseases, all of which for the since the establishment of the mentioned medical centers in Metro Manila have been referred consistently to Metro Manila. And this establishment would support the universal health care as it serves as a it would serve as a chief referral hospital. My thesis on the patient navigation and referral system is consistent with this data. Nakikita po talaga namin na there is unacceptable delay in treatment of emergency cases. And waiting for long lines is one at the medical centers in Metro Manila is one consistent fact. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Dr. Guadalupe. May we now hear from the Department of Budget and Management, Ms. Joy Joy Rico?
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Members of the committee, your honors, colleagues from government and everyone present at this meeting. We just have a brief manifestation, Mr. Chair. As to the bills proposing to establish, upgrade, and increase the bed capacity...
Can you speak louder?
As to the bills proposing to establish, upgrade, and increase the bed capacity of the subject health facilities and medical centers to provide medical, allied medical and other health-related services to patients, especially to the indigents, we deem that the Department of Health is in a better position to assess the viability of upgrading hospitals.
Excuse me, is this related to the bill of Honorable Puno?
Mr. Chair, in general, to the establishment and upgraded increase of bed capacity. It's an omnibus manifestation, Mr. Chair, if you will allow me.
Proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, we deem that the Department of Health is in a better position to assess the viability of upgrading hospitals, increasing the bed capacity of hospitals and establishing health facilities. In this regard, the DOH should ensure that the proposals are consistent with existing regulations, licensing, health improvement and other related policies, standards, guidelines and criteria. In addition, it is important to note that with the upgrade and increase in the bed capacity of the subject hospitals, their respective operational costs shall likewise increase since their facilities will need to be upgraded to adhere to the existing standards, criteria and requirements prescribed by the DOH. The funding requirements shall be subject to the usual budgetary process and approval by the Congress. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Rico.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve House Bill number five three zero four.
There's a motion by Honorable Assim. Julie seconded that House Bill number five three zero four be approved. Hearing no objection, the same is approved. Congratulations. Before we proceed to the next bill, we'd like to acknowledge the presence of Vice Chair, Honorable Alfredo Armand de Maguila Junior of the Long District of Binian City, Attorney Keith Maica Tan of the Fourth District of Quezon, Honorable Jennifer Legbas of the First District of Misamis Oriental, Honorable Agustina Dominique Dichotina Pancho of the Second District of Bulakan, and Honorable Gurli Veloso of Partilis Malasakit Bayanihan, Vice Chairperson. We now proceed with House Bill number three seven nine, An Act Converting the Bukidnon Provincial Medical Center in Malay Balay City, Province of Bukidnon, into a regional hospital to be known as Bukidnon Regional Hospital, increasing its bed capacity from one hundred fifty to three hundred beds, modernizing its facilities and services and appropriating funds therefore, by Honorable Jonathan Keith Flores. And another bill, House Bill number three eight zero, An Act Establishing a Lung a Lung Tropical Disease Rehabilitation and Geriatric Multi-Specialty Hospital in the city of Malay Balay, Province of Bukidnon, to be known as the Malay Balay Multi-Specialty Hospital and appropriating funds therefore, also by Honorable Jonathan Keith Flores. Honorable Flores is now recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, the last time that the bed capacity of the hospital in Malay Balay was increased was in nineteen ninety two from one hundred to one hundred fifty beds. At that time, the population was only eight hundred forty four thousand and still with a hundred fifty bed capacity. That's why, Mr. Chair, that we are hoping that this bill will be approved and that the bed capacity will be increased to three hundred, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Flores. Dr. Resena?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Bukidnon is composed of twenty municipalities and two component cities. It has seventeen privately operated hospitals and privately and four managed by the local government, which are two Level One hospitals and two Level Two hospitals. With this mix of facilities, Bukidnon meets the minimum requirement of the health care provider network under the UHC Act, which mandates that a province should have at least one Level One hospital and at least one Level Two or Level Three hospital. However, significant gaps remain in bed capacity and higher level of care service coverage. And according to the Philippine Health Facility Development Plan, the province faces a shortage of two thousand one hundred thirty five Level One beds and three hundred thirty Level Two beds by twenty twenty five. So, Bukidnon Provincial Medical Center is a Level Two hospital in Malay Balay City under the supervision of the provincial government of Bukidnon. We note in section one of House Bill number three seven nine that it shall be under the direct supervision and of the Department of Health. So, pursuant to the directive of the present administration to establish at least one DOH hospital per province, it is noted that Bukidnon currently does not have a DOH managed hospital. In view of these considerations, the DOH recommends that the following guiding principles and conditions be considered on its implementation of the proposal to convert the BPMC in Malay Balay into a regional hospital under the DOH to be known as the Bukidnon Regional Hospital. First is the prioritization under the Philippine Health Facility Development Plan. Even with the directive on prioritizing provinces without existing DOH hospitals, the transfer of a hospital to the direct supervision and control of the DOH should be consistent with the PHDP. The transfer must ensure that Bukidnon's province-wide health system retains a full range of health facilities in accordance with the UHC law and the law's guidance on the integration of local health systems. Hence, the DOH recommends upgrading of the remaining LGU-owned hospitals to complete the province-wide health systems service delivery design. Second, the hospital site must have adequate land area, basic utilities, ICT infrastructure and transport access to support operations and future upgrading and expansion. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, from the Department of Budget Management, Ms. Joy.
Good morning again, Mr. Chair. May I respectfully reiterate the early...
Mr. Chair, the chief of hospital of my hospital is coming.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve House Bill number three seven nine and House Bill three eight zero.
I second the motion. So, there's a duly seconded motion that House Bill number three seven nine and House Bill number three eight zero be approved. Hearing no objection, the same is approved. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Congratulations. Before we move to the next bill, we'd like to acknowledge the presence of committee member, Honorable Janice Ligamo of the Third District of Negroes Oriental, Honorable Nathaniel Odukado of Partilis Wantahanan, and Honorable Antonino Roman of the First District of Batan. Thank you. We now proceed with House Bill number two seven one, An Act Converting Doctor George Royeca City Hospital in General Santo City into a regional medical center to be known as the Doctor George Royeca Regional Medical Center, upgrading its professional health care services and facilities appropriating funds therefore and for other purposes by Honorable Representative Shirley Banyas Nograles. Honorable Nograles is now recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My dear colleagues, our honored guests, of course, Dr. Riot Aplicular, our head of Doctor George Royeca Hospital, who came all the way from General Santo City. Everyone present, magandang umaga po. This measure aims not only to upgrade and expand its professional the professional health care service of Doctor George Royeca Hospital and increase its bed capacity from two hundred to six hundred, but also to establish the facility as a research and training center and as a base hospital for Mindanao State University College of Medicine in General Santo City, which is soon to produce its first batch of medical doctors. The measure likewise provides for the necessary national funding to support the hospital's operation and maintenance. For fifty years, Doctor George Royeca City Hospital has stood as a primary refuge for thousands of marginalized families, workers, farmers, mothers, senior citizens who have no other place to run to in times of sickness and emergency. It has done its best, but we all know that its capacity has not kept pace with the growing number of people and the increasing health care needs of our community. Over the five decades, our city hospital has only cared for more than seven hundred twenty two thousand residents of General Santo City, but has also extended its services to neighboring provinces and municipalities, including Sarangani, South Cotabato, Sultan Cudarat, and even residents of Balut Island in Davao Occidental. This wide reach reflects General Santo City's strategic location at the southern tip of Mindanao, making it an indispensable hub not only for trade and commerce, but also for health and welfare across the region. From a humble twenty-five bed capacity inaugurated in nineteen seventy-four, the hospital has evolved through several name changes and expansions. But what has changed is this, the demand for health care continues to rise while the resources to respond to that demand remained painfully inadequate. Today, it operates as a two hundred bed Level Two hospital. Yet, every single day, more than two hundred patients seeks treatment here. Mr. Chair, this means two sick individuals share one three or two sick individuals share one bed. According to the position paper of DOH project twelve, it has said the hospital has authorized one hundred bed capacity, but however, its occupancy bed rate is around three hundred percent. While there is a subsogen general hospital within the region located in Sorala, South Cotabato, it is situated approximately seventy-nine kilometers away from General Santo City, about three hours of travel via public transport. It operates primarily as a general hospital offering essential services for the communities it serves. However, the growing health care needs of Region Twelve calls for a facility that provides a broader range of specialty and subspecialty services as well as comprehensive clinical training environment for medical students, particularly those from MSU General Santo City College of Medicine. Strengthening our regional health care system through the establishment of full pledge medical center in General Santo City would therefore significantly enhance access to advanced health care and create a more robust training and research base for future medical professionals. Our local leaders repeatedly appealed for help. Eight resolutions from Sangguni Angpanglungso of General Santo City were passed since twenty sixteen to twenty twenty-four. Years of advocacy, countless stories of families waiting in crowded hallways hoping for a bed to free up, please, this peace cannot be ignored any longer. In the eighteen and nineteen Congress, similar bills were filed calling for the upgrading of our city hospital. Today, we carry the same hope forward. May this measure finally rise above the halls of deliberation and find its rightful place in law. Mr. Chair, distinguished colleagues, our people deserve a medical center that reflects their resilience with the needs of our growing population and honors their aspiration. They deserve a hospital that heals, not one that turns away turns them away and forces them to travel for hours in search of care. Health care is not...
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We note that the Doctor George P. Royeca City Hospital in General Santo City has an average bed occupancy rate of ninety-three point thirty-nine percent, which is above the ideal eighty-five percent threshold. Likewise, the emergency room visits increased by seventy-seven percent from twenty-one. from 12,500 in 2022 to 22,100 in 2024, while the OPD visits rose by 74% from 17,000 in 2022 to 30,500 in 2024, which reflects the growing service demand. In view of the foregoing, the DOH supports the proposed increase in bed capacity from 200 to 600 beds to address the rising patient demand. On Section Seven, we recommend reviewing Section Seven of the bill because it provides for General Santo City Medical Center. But Section One and the other sections of the bill provides for the Doctor George P. Royeca City Hospital in General Santo City. Furthermore, on the proposal that the hospital be transferred under the direct supervision of the Department of Health, we note that the province of South Cotabato, where General Santo City is located, is served by the Socergen General Hospital under the supervision of the Department of Health. Currently, this hospital is a level-one 75-bed facility, but it will be progressively increased in service capability to become the apex or end-referral hospital in the whole province of South Cotabato. In view of the directive that one DOH hospital per province, we express reservation on the proposal of the transfer of the Doctor George P. Royeca City Hospital to the Department of Health. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any adds comment from honorable, reaction from honorable Banyas Nograles?
Mr. Chair, we'd like to appeal from the DOH to reconsider their decision because General Santo City is a highly urbanized city and it's independent of the province of South Cotabato by virtue of Republic Act 5412. And furthermore, it is 300 kilo, 3 hours away from Sorala Hospital, Socergen Hospital. So I hope that the DOH will reconsider. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. For the record, we'd like to recognize DBM, Ms. Joy Rico.
Mr. Chair, respectfully reiterating the earlier manifestation in application to House Bill Number 271. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any motion?
I move for the approval of House Bill Number 271.
Second the motion.
There's a motion to approve House Bill Number 271 and duly seconded. Hearing no objection, the same is approved. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
We'd like to recognize the presence of Committee Member Honorable Emmanuel Iway of the First District of Negroes Oriental, Honorable Edwin Cruzado of the First District of Cotabato, Honorable Agatha Paula Aguilar Cruz of the Fifth District of Bulakan, and Honorable Audrey K. Zubiri of the Third District of Bukidnun. Thank you. We now proceed with House Bill Number 230. An up-upgrading Bukidnun Provincial Hospital in the municipality of Maramag, province of Bukidnun, into a tertiary level-three general hospital to be known as the BPH Maramag under the control, supervision, and management of the Department of Health and appropriating funds therefore by Honorable Audrey K. Zubiri. Honorable Zubiri, you are now recognized.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much. I move to have my explanatory note as my, as my speech for my House Bill. And just as I discussed now with Congressman Keith Flores, I would also like to underscore the urgency and importance of Bukidnun having its first DOH hospital. While other provinces already have maybe two or three, in Bukidnun, we struggle as we have none yet. And statistical report in 2023 and 2024, each, its average bed occupancy rate is 182%, which is ideal, above the ideal bed occupancy rate of 85%. In terms of emergency room visits, there was an increase in 14% and also in the OPD visits. In view of the, the need of the province of Bukidnun and the commitment and directive of the present DOH administration, the DOH supports and recognizes the intent to expand access to advanced health services in the province of BPH Maramag as the most viable option to achieving UHC goals and in line with formal dialogue and commitments involving facility transfer and service delivery. I would also like to mention that House Bill 379 as discussed earlier also proposes a transfer of the Bukidnun Provincial Medical Center in Malay Balay under the Department of Health. We recommend that the province considers what provincial hospital will be, will be transferred to the Department of Health so that the healthcare provider network or of the province will still be preserved and the service-delivery design will have a full range of facilities. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. A brief remark from the Chief of Hospital, Doctor Edmundo Garcia.
Good morning, everyone, especially to the chairperson, members of the Committee on Health, and the proponent of the House Bill 230, Coach Roman Audrey Zubiri. I am Doctor Edmundo Garcia, Chief of Hospital of BPH Maramag. First, I would like to thank this honorable committee for inviting and having me again for the second time. Bukidnun Provincial Hospital of Maramag serve as a critical public healthcare facility in the heart of Mindanao, demonstrating a high-volume service commitment that stands far beyond the authorized capacity. BPH Maramag is a level-two general hospital with an authorized bed capacity of 130 beds. The ABC is the legal number of beds the hospital is funded and staffed for, but with an average daily occupancy of 172, 200% for the past two decades, this significantly exceed the ABC indicating severe overcrowding and high demand for services. The governing authority is under the provincial government of Bukidnun. When Malaseke Center was made into law in way back 2020, recognizing the patients' needs, I wrote a letter request endorsed by Governor Jose Zubiri to Senator Bongo of setting up a Malaseke Center in BPH Maramag. True enough, my request was approved and the 118th Malaseke Center was launched in June 2021 that provides a one-top shelf for financial assistance programs to the patients in BPH Maramag. BPH Maramag is strategically located in Maramag within an area of almost three hectares in the southern part of Bukidnun. At a crossroads going to Lallad del Sur at west, Cotabato at south, and Davao East, it has a vital role, vital health access point for extensive geographic area. The primary catchpin area of BPH Maramag is the inter-provence of Bukidnun. Expanded service area, it serves as a major referral center for patients from neighboring provinces, including Lallad del Sur, North Cotabato, and Davao provinces. This broad coverage highlights the role as a major regional referral hub especially for the poor and underprivileged patients seeking subsidized and accessible care. As a level-two hospital, BPH Maramag is mandated to provide a range of general and some specialty medical, surgical, and supportive services, including internal medicine, pediatrics, obgynae, general surgery, urology, neurosurgery, orthopedic, ENT, ophthalmology, and even spine surgery, and family medicine. This also provided a 24/7 emergency and critical care and ancillary services, including clinical laboratory, radiology, and pharmacy. The hospital faces significant, significant challenges due to the stark disparity between its authorized capacity and actual patient load, resulting to overcrowding. This signifies a severe lack of space, often leading to patients being housed in hallways, on folding beds, or temporary setups, straining their resources and personnel. The high patient volume places a constant burden on the medical staff, equipments, and the supply of medicines. In recognition of its critical role and overwhelming demand, there are pending legislative efforts to upgrade BPH Maramag to a level-three tertiary hospital under the DOH. This upgrade is intended to increase the ABC to match the high demand of the hospital, expand the service capability, offering more complex specialized medical and surgical services required of a level, tertiary level hospital, and aligned with the UHC, improving access to quality healthcare in line with the Universal Healthcare Act. Thus, upgrading BPH Maramag to a level-two hospital improves patient care and access. BPH Maramag can provide more specialized diagnostic and therapeutic services, reducing the need for patients to travel to distant Apex Hospital, which is about 32 hours to Cagayne de Oro and six hours to Davao City and to costly private institutions. This also address overcrowding. The current 130-bed capacity is insufficient for the growing and complex medical needs of the population. A level-three hospital will expand capabilities to handle a higher patient load more efficiently. Third, it will solve staffing issues. The upgrade requires a larger, more specialized force, which can address through government-funded staffing standards for level-three hospital mitigating current understanding problems, understaffing problem. Fourth, with a level-three status, BPH Maramag will offer specialty care, filling a critical gap since Bukidnun is one of the 130 provinces without a listed-in hospital. Fifth, it supports a zero billing policy. Becoming a national hospital would facilitate BPH Maramag compliance with a zero billing policy under the Universal Healthcare Act. Sixth, it enhances medical education. The hospital can become the primary clinical training site for future medical students from Bukidnun State University and Central Mindanao University, strengthening the local medical education. Seventh, the facility's new capabilities will create poor opportunities for health workers to be trained and develop their skills in special procedures, improving the overall quality of the healthcare in the region. Ultimately, this will strengthen the public health infrastructure in Central Mindanao and provide more equitable and timely medical services to a larger population. In behalf of the staff and personnel of BPH Maramag and the constituents of Bukidnun and Central Mindanao, I implore all this committee to facilitate for the approval of the House Bill. Thank you and good morning, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Doctor Garcia.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Honorable Di Magila.
I move for the approval of House Bill Number 230.
There's a motion to approve House Bill Number 230. Hearing no objection, the same is approved. Congratulations. At this point, we'd like to acknowledge the presence of Committee Member Honorable Johann Munich Bautista of Partilista Trabajo, John Tracy Cagas, Honorable John Tracy Cagas of the Long District of Davao del Sur, and Honorable Jose Joe Boyacino of the Long District of the City of Butuan. We now tackle House Bill Number 357 by Honorable Violago. In his behalf, we now recognize Honorable Lagdemio to sponsor this bill.
Mr. Chair, I move that the explanatory note be included for the record as the sponsorship speech for House Bill Number 357. I so move.
Thank you. Director Melissa, the DOH.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Bulakan has an estimated bed-to-population ratio of 1 is to 1,329 based on the 2025 PSA estimated population. So in Bulakan, there are 63 licensed hospitals, 52 of which are privately owned, and a total of 11 hospitals under the government. Please note that there is a DOH hospital in the province, which is the Joanie Villanueva General Hospital in Bokawe. It's currently a level-two facility with a 69-bed capacity. However, as envisioned for all DOH hospital, it shall be upgraded to become the apex or end-referral hospital of the healthcare provider network, particularly of the province-wide health system of Bulakan. The hospital, Joanie Villanueva General Hospital, is approximately 29 kilometers with, from, from San Rafael, which, which has an estimated travel time of less than an hour. The, the ideal travel time to, of access to a hospital is within one hour. So in view of the foregoing, the DOH poses no objection to the establishment of a general hospital in San Rafael, Bulakan, provided that the facility shall be under the control and supervision of the provincial government. Such investments would be aligned with the Philippine Health Facility Development Plan and the Local Investment Plan for Health of Bulakan. The Central Luzon Center for Health Development shall provide assistance and the DOH in general may, may provide capital outlay support for the establishment of the hospital. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Director Melissa. From the DBM, Ms. Joy Rico.
Mr. Chair, respectfully reiterating the earlier manifestation in application to House Bill Number 357. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Joy. We take note of the position of Department of Health.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve House Bill Number 357. Thank you.
There's a duly seconded motion that House Bill Number 37, no, 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 357, an act establishing in the municipality of San Rafael, province of Bulakan, a general hospital to be known as the Doña Remedios Trinidad General Hospital and appropriating funds therefore is now approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
We now proceed with House Bill Number 2701. An act upgrading the Lawag City General Hospital in the Lawag City, in Lawag City, Ilocos Norte, into a level-two general hospital to be known as Lawag City Medical Center, increasing its bed capacity, upgrading its professional healthcare services and facilities, authorizing the increase of its medical personnel and appropriating funds therefore by Honorable Ferdinand Alexander Marcos. To sponsor in his behalf is Honorable Hasim.
Mr. Chair, I move that the explanatory note of House Bill Number 2701 be considered as its sponsorship bill. Thank you.
Thank you. DOH Director Melissa.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ilocos Norte has an estimated bed-to-population ratio of 1 is to 908, which is within the ideal 1 is to 1,000 bed-to-population ratio. There are eight licensed hospitals in the province, four of which are privately owned, three level-one and one level-two, and one DOH hospitals, and three hospitals under the administrative control of the local government unit. This satisfies the service-delivery design of the healthcare provider network. So in view of the foregoing, the DOH poses no objection to the proposed upgrading of Lawag City Medical Center and the increase in bed capacity, provided that the facility shall be under the control and supervision of the provincial government. Please note that the DOH hospital, the Mariano Marcos Memorial Hospital in Batak is within 35-minute travel time to Lawag City. And in view of the directive that we should prioritize provinces without a DOH hospital, we defer... we defer the transfer of Lawag City General Hospital to the Department of Health. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Director Melissa. May we hear a very brief comment from the Officer in Charge, Dr. Marshall Lu Wapan?
So, good morning, all to the distinguished body of this Committee on Health. We are grateful and in support of the House Bill 2071, sponsored by our Honorable Congressman Sandro Marcos, for the upgrade of our institution, Lawag City General Hospital. Yes, we recognize that at present, we have a one-Level 3 Apex Hospital in our locality, and that is also 35 minutes away from our hospital, and we have another Level 2 provincial hospital, pero as such, we still believe that there is a need for additional upgraded hospital, Level 2 hospital. But what is different in our case is that we are an economic enterprise of the Lawag City, LGU, and as such, we are grateful that if we will be subsidized by a national government, and we will be able, or even...
The title of the bill does not indicate that it should be under the DOH. But in the body, it's under the DOH. So, it is intended to be under the control and supervision of the Department of Health. LGU?
DOH po.
A DOH.
That would be our, hindi po, kami po ay LGU Economic Enterprise po. But I think the exploratory I just read lang po, but if that would be the case, we will be still under LGU po. LGU po kami po.
Ah, no, no, I mean, itong bill na ito, ilalagay niyo under the Department of Health, or will it be under the LGU?
DOH po, yun po 'yung proposal.
Yes, Honorable Di Magila.
I move for the approval of House Bill Number 2701.
There's a duly seconded motion to approve House Bill Number 2701. Hearing objection, the same is approved. Next is House Bill Number 3391. An act establishing in the municipality of Malangas, Province of Sambongga Cibugay, a hospital to be known as the Malangas Medical Center, or MMC, and appropriating funds therefore by Honorable Marlo Bancoro. Honorable Bancoro is now recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. To our Honorable Chairman, Dr. Seriaco Bigato Jr., distinguished members of this committee, resource persons, guests, good morning. Allow me to express my gratitude to the Honorable Chair for including House Bill Number 3391 for today's deliberation. Your prompt attention to these measures brings hope to many of our constituents who continue to struggle with limited access to quality healthcare. I'm here today to sponsor House Bill Number 3391, a measure that seeks to establish in the municipality of Malangas, Province of Sambongga Cibugay, a hospital known, a hospital to be known as Malangas Medical Center. Mr. Chair, our province, particularly the towns in the eastern and coastal corridors, continues to face a critical shortage of accessible and adequately equipped healthcare facilities. Patients from Malangas and its neighboring municipalities of Alisia, De Plahan, Emelda, and even parts of Bog must travel long distances, often over rough terrain just to reach the nearest secondary or tertiary hospital. In emergency cases, that distance becomes the difference between life and death. Malangas is rapidly growing municipality with vibrant economic activity from the power industry to agriculture and fisheries. Yet, its medical infrastructure has not kept pace with its population needs. Our rural health units are doing all that they can be, but they lack the facilities, personnel, and equipment to respond to serious medical conditions. This gap continues to burden families, especially the poor, who are forced to seek medical care outside the district, incurring costs many of them cannot afford. The establishment of Malangas Medical Center is therefore not just a matter of convenience, it is a matter of public health, equity, and justice. A hospital in Malangas will ensure timely and life-saving medical interventions, especially during emergencies. Increase the number of constituents served, reduce overcrowding in existing hospitals in the province, improve maternal and child health outcomes by providing safe and nearby nursing and pediatric services, and strengthening the government's universal healthcare agenda, ensuring that even geographically isolated and disadvantaged areas receive quality care. Mr. Chair, this bill also provides for the necessary appropriations for the establishment operation of the hospital. Recognizing that infrastructure alone is not enough, we must ensure that it is staff-equipped and capable of serving our people. House Bill Number 3391 is the product of our consultation with local leaders, which have been submitted to the Committee on Health on 6 November 2025. In addition, there is a recent Sanggulayang Bayan Resolution passed by the Second Bayan of Malangas, Sambongga Cibugay, Resolution Number 2025-417, expressing the commitment of municipality to provide a suitable lot and allocate funds if necessary for the purchase of a lot in support of the establishment of Malangas Medical Center. These resolutions reflect the collective support from our local government units under longstanding plea, a hospital that is accessible, properly staffed, and capable of delivering quality health services for all. It also, it is also worthy to note, Mr. Chair, that it is only our province that does not have a DOH-run hospital in Region 9. With this, I humbly ask this committee to support this measure. The people of Malangas and the surrounding municipalities have waited far too long. With your approval, we can take the first crucial step toward giving them the healthcare system they rightfully deserve. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, esteemed members of this committee.
Thank you, Honorable Bancoro. From, before we recognize Director Melissa, we'd like to recognize the presence of our Vice Chair, Honorable Catherine Joyce Goriseta of the Second District of Iloilo, and Honorable Midi Kua of the Long District of Kirino. Director Melissa of the Department of Health.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Sambongga Cibugay has 16 municipalities with a bed-to-population ratio of 1,000, 2,983, based on the 2025 PSA population. The province has seven licensed Level 1 hospitals. Six of these are privately owned, and one is under the local government unit. Notably, there is no DOH hospital located in the province. Based on the demand projection of the Philippine Health Facility Development Plan, the province faces a shortfall of 962 Level 1 beds, 752 Level 2 beds, and for the whole of Region 9, there's a gap of 2,047 Level 3 hospital beds in 2025. In line with the directive of the Secretary of Health to ensure that every province has at least one DOH hospital, the establishment of a DOH hospital in Sambongga Cibugay is strategically important. In view of the foregoing, the DOH supports the establishment of a DOH-managed hospital in Sambongga Cibugay, subject to considerations of prioritization under the Philippine Health Facility Development Plan and infrastructure and accessibility. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Question, is this hospital be a Level 1 or Level 2?
Sir, for DOH hospital, the vision is to be Level 3 with specialty capability, and the bill provides that any increase in bed capacity and service capability shall be based on the hospital development plan.
It will be Level 3?
Yes, Mr. Chair, the bill does not limit.
Okay, thank you.
With that, Mr. Chair, may I request that the Committee Secretary can make appropriate inclusion of the category in the bill, because I did not put it to give time for the DOHs to make adjustment for that purpose, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We'll take note of that, Honorable Bancoro, and Honorable Director Melissa. From the Department of Budget and Management, Ms. Joy.
Mr. Chair, respectfully reiterating the earlier manifestation in application to House Bill Number 3391. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any motion?
Mr. Chair, as a fellow Cibugainon, I move that House Bill Number 3391 be approved. Thank you.
There's a duly seconded motion that House Bill Number 3391, an act establishing in the municipality of Malangas, Province of Sambongga Cibugay, a Level 3 hospital to be known as the Malangas Medical Center, and appropriating funds therefore, is now approved.
With that amendment, Mr. Chair, for the inclusion of the category. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Congratulations. We now proceed with House Bill Number 4056. An act upgrading the Butuan Medical Center in Butuan City, Province of Agusan del Norte, into a Level 3 hospital to be known as Butuan General Hospital under the direct supervision and control of the Department of Health and appropriating funds therefore, by Honorable Jose Joe Boya Quino II. Honorable Quino is now recognized.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. Before I start my sponsorship speech, may I acknowledge Honorable Theodore Gabriel Salcedo, City Councilor of Butuan City, Head of the Committee on Health, and also Dr. Jose Torres III, Butuan Medical Center, OIC Hospital Administrator. Honorable Chair, Representative Seriaco Bigato Jr., distinguished members, my fellow legislators, ladies and gentlemen, good morning. I would like to thank the committee for taking up to deliberate House Bill 4056, upgrading the Butuan Medical Center to Level 3 hospital and placing it under the supervision of the Department of Health. The Butuan Medical Center stands today as the healthcare lifeline for the entire Agusan del Norte and its neighboring provinces in the Karaga Region. Yet, despite its crucial role, we face a sobering reality. There is currently no public or private hospital in Agusan del Norte with the equivalent of a Level 3 service and training capability. Butuan City is ascending, our population is growing, and the healthcare challenges our constituents face are becoming increasingly complex, demanding specialized in tertiary care. This bill, House Bill Number 4056, is the vital investment our region needs. Us upgrading the said hospital will ensure the highest standards of medical service and patient care. I wish to highlight a crucial point. Upgrading the Butuan Medical Center into a Level 3 hospital will pave the way to the learning development of our medical students enrolled under the newly established College of Medicine in Karaga State University. This will benefit the students who have intensive and in-depth training through the hospital's facilities and capabilities, capabilities that will forge a powerful synergy that will produce exceptional doctors and deliver cutting-edge medical research in Karaga. Furthermore, this hospital will house the planned Karaga Regional Heart Center initiated by this representation in partnership and coordination with the Philippine Heart Center. By upgrading the Butuan Medical Center, we ensure that every person, regardless of economic status, has access to the comprehensive, specialized, and life-saving care they deserve. Hence, I appeal to this honorable committee and its members that the said bill be approved. Thank you and good morning.
Thank you, Honorable Quino. We recognize now Director Melissa.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Butuan Medical Center is a Level 2 general hospital with an authorized bed capacity of 150. Its bed occupancy rate averaged in 2024 is 92.24% above the ideal BOR of 80% to 85%. While noting that Butuan City is a highly urbanized city, the whole province of Agusan del Norte has gaps of 653 for Level 1 beds, 262 for Level 2 beds, and 1,783 for Level 3 beds for the whole region. In consideration of the foregoing, we support the upgrade in service capability and increase in bed capacity of Butuan Medical Center. Likewise, in view of the directive to establish at least one DOH hospital per province, we interpose no objection to the transfer of Butuan Medical Center from the province, from the city, to the Department of Health. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Director Melissa. We'd like to recognize also the presence of the City Councilor of Butuan, Honorable Theodore Gabriel Salcedo, and the Officer in Charge and Hospital Administration of Butuan Medical Center, Dr. Jose Torres. Dr. Jose Torres is now recognized for his brief position.
So, good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the Committee on Health, Congressman Jose Joe Boya Quino II, our City Councilor, Theodore Salcedo, fellow public servants, and fellow doctors. Butuan Medical Center is the only Level 2 government hospital in Agusan del Norte, having grown from a 25-bed facility in 1960 to 150-bed Level 2 ISO-certified and CPD-accredited training provider, LGU-managed hospital today. Strategically located in Butuan City, it serves as a broad catchment area that includes all 86 barangays in Butuan City, patients from Agusan del Norte, Agusan del Sur, Surigao del Norte, Surigao del Sur, and Dinagat Islands. Despite its Level 2 classification, BMC effectively functions as the de facto regional referral center for the Karaga Region. The hospital's service utilization clearly demonstrates an escalating demand with a recorded average bed occupancy of, as mentioned, 94%, with peak periods reaching 150%, far exceeding optimal capacity. Admissions have also increased by 33%, indicating persistent overcrowding and operations well beyond the limits of a Level 2 hospital. Patients requiring more advanced diagnostics, subspecialty care, or tertiary-level interventions must be transferred to facilities such as Davao Regional Medical Center, Northern Mindanao Medical Center, or Southern Philippines Medical Center, requiring 4 to 8 hours of travel time, often resulting in delayed care and poorer health outcomes. Upgrading and expanding BMC also aligns with the development of the Karaga State University College of Medicine, located only 2 kilometers away from the hospital. Strengthening the BMC's capacity will support the establishment of residency training programs, enhance clinical teaching, and help produce physicians whose competencies meet international standards, an essential step in addressing the long-term healthcare workforce needs of Butuan City and neighboring provinces of the Karaga Region. So, on behalf of Butuan Medical Center and the entire Karaga Region, I extend my deepest gratitude to the honorable members of the Committee on Health for your time, your attention, and your continued dedication to advancing health and welfare of our community. Your support and leadership are vital in making the upgrade of Butuan Medical Center a reality, an investment that will save lives, strengthen our healthcare system, and ensure that no Filipino in our region is left behind. and ensure that no Filipino in our region is left behind. So, thank you, Mr. Chair, and all the members of the Committee on Health for your steadfast commitment to public service and for standing with us in this crucial endeavor. Again, thank you and good morning.
Thank you, Dr. Torres. From the DBM, Ms. Joy.
Mr. Chair, respectfully reiterating the earlier manifestation in application to House Bill Number 4056. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Honorable Kuah.
I move and support House Bill 4056, an act upgrading the Butuan Medical Center into a Level 3 hospital to provide all the medical needs benefiting all the people from Butuan and its region. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I also wish to manifest my support and move for the approval of House Bill 4056, Butuan City being a neighbor of my district, and with the fervent hope, Mr. Chair, that when emergency arises, maybe some of my brothers and sisters may be able to avail of emergency services in the said hospital. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. There's a duly seconded motion by Honorable Kuah that House Bill Number... 4056. 4056, an act upgrading the Butuan Medical Center in Butuan City, Province of Agusan del Norte into a Level 3 hospital to be known as the Butuan General Hospital under the direct supervision and control of the Department of Health and appropriating funds therefore, be is now approved. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and to all my colleagues, thank you so much.
We now move to House Bill Number 4... 4307, an act converting the Abra Provincial Hospital into a Level 2 hospital to be known as Dr. Luis F. Bersamín Senior Medical Center Complex, upgrading its facilities, increasing its bed capacity, and establishing a multi-specialty hospital to be known as the Governor Andres B. Bernos Multi-Specialty Medical Center, both in the Municipality of Bangad, Province of Abra, and under the control and supervision and management of the Department of Health and appropriating funds therefore, by Honorable J.B. Bernos and Honorable Ching Bernos. In their behalf, Honorable Dalog is now recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, distinguished colleagues, on behalf of the Representative J.B. Bernos and Representative Ching Bernos, I rise to sponsor this measure that seeks to modernize and strengthen the healthcare system of the Province of Abra. This bill converts the Abra Provincial Hospital into a Level 2 facility named the Dr. Luis F. Bersamín Senior Medical Center Complex under the full supervision, control, and standards of the Department of Health. The measure likewise establishes the Governor Andres B. Bernos Multi-Specialty Medical Center as a specialty component unit within the medical center complex operating under the same administrative, regulatory, and supervisory structure. Mr. Chair, the conversion and establishment of a multi-specialty hospital are not separate undertakings. Rather, they represent two dimensions of one comprehensive upgrade. Placing both provisions in one bill ensures that they will be recognized together and avoid fragmented legislation. This would guarantee that the people of Abra will receive a fully integrated and fully capable hospital system without delay. By honoring Dr. Luis F. Bersamín Senior and Governor Andres B. Bernos, we also acknowledge two leaders whose service greatly contributed to the well-being of the people of Abra. Mr. Chair, this bill is a direct step towards fulfilling the state's duty to provide accessible, quality, and equitable healthcare. Respectfully ask for the support of this committee for its immediate passage. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Bernos. Director Melissa.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We recognize the intent of House Bill Number 4307. First is the renaming of Abra Provincial Hospital to Dr. Luis F. Bersamín Senior Medical Center Complex, the transfer of said hospital to the Department of Health, and the increase in bed capacity and service capability. The second intent is the establishment of the Governor Andres B. Bernos Multi-Specialty Medical Center. Thank you very much to Mr. Sponsor for clarifying that the said Multi-Specialty Medical Center shall be a unit of the Abra Provincial Hospital renamed as Dr. Luis F. Bersamín Senior Medical Center. So, in view of the directive to establish at least one DOH hospital per province, and the Province of Abra does not have a DOH hospital, and its bed-to-population ratio is 1:2. The gap for hospitals in the... For Level 1, 2, 3 beds in the province are 306, 164, and 480, based on the 2025 population. The Department of Health interposes no objection to the proposed increase in bed capacity of the hospital, to the renaming, provided that the new nomenclature is consistent with the hospital's mandate and capacity to serve its patients based on Administrative Order 2020012, the Licensing Guidelines for Health Facilities, and also we interpose no objection to the transfer of the hospital to the Department of Health. We recommend clarifying in the bill the establishment of Governor Andres B. Bernos Multi-Specialty Medical Center, so as not to be misleading that it is a separate facility because we have RA 4226, which mandates the One Facility, One License Rule. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you for the clarification. I was also about to ask whether this Andres Soriano... Governor Andres Bernos is a different hospital. Now, it's a unit inside the Bernos Medical Center. Okay. May we now recognize Dr. Rosaro Vincent Ciarras, the OIC Assistant Provincial Health Officer of Abra.
Good morning po, to all the members of the Committee on Health. Access to quality healthcare is a fundamental right, and ensuring that government facilities are able to deliver essential services is vital for the welfare of citizens. In Abra, we do not have a DOH hospital. The Abra Provincial Hospital in Bangad, Abra is a 50-bed, Level 1, LGU-operated hospital that serves most residents in the province. However, its performance is constrained by limited funding, understaffing, and inadequate facilities. Our bed occupancy rate is 142%, so reflecting the inadequacy of this facility to meet the medical demands of the people of Abra. Our nearest apex hospital is Don Mariano Marcos in Ilocostorte and the Ilocost Training Hospital in San Fernando La Union. And this facility is 250 kilometers away from our province, and it takes 4 to 5 hours for the ambulance to reach these apex hospitals. And it is often our observation that there is clinical deterioration in transferring critically ill patients po. So, we pray that Abra Provincial Hospital should be renationalized, that is, management and supervision should be transferred from the provincial government to the Department of Health of the national government. Renationalization will help ensure sustainable funding, consistent standards of care, improved staff compensation, proper infrastructure, and alignment with national health policy, including free essential health services. Thank you po.
Thank you, Dr. Ciarras, from the Department of Budget and Management. Ms. Joy.
Mr. Chair, respectfully reiterating our earlier manifestation in application to House Bill Number 4307. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Before the motion for approval, we'd like to recognize our Vice Chairperson, Honorable Giselle Mary Maceda of the 4th District of Manila.
I move for the approval of House Bill Number 4307.
There's a duly seconded motion that House Bill Number 4307 be approved, subject to the amendments. Hearing objection, the same is approved. Congratulations. The last three bills are all for the increasing the bed capacity of East Avenue Medical Center. So, we now... We allow the authors to present to sponsor first and then the reaction from the Department of Health. So, first, we recognize Honorable Jesús Manuel Bong Suntai on House Bill Number 2069, an act increasing the bed capacity of the East Avenue Medical Center in Barangay de Liman, Quezon City, from 1,000 to 1,500 beds and appropriating funds therefore.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, distinguished colleagues, fellow public servants. East Avenue Medical Center is the Public Safety Net tertiary hospital for Metro Manila. Its emergency room receives the cases that cannot wait: stroke, trauma, sepsis, difficult pregnancies, advanced cancers. Despite the previous expansion to 1,000 beds, the intolerable reality remains: patients wait in gurneys, families line the corridors, and clinicians are forced to practice battlefield triage in peacetime. This bill answers a simple moral question: Can we make room for those who have nowhere else to go? House Bill 2069 does three essential things. First, it raises capacity by 50% and directs that services expand in step: ICU and step-down units, dialysis stations, oncology, and surgical wards, maternal and child health, and surge bed for outbreaks or disaster. Second, it maintains a proportional increase in plantilla. Doctors, nurses ally the health and support personnel. So, we are not adding empty beds, but stuffed beds. Third, it anchors the expansion in a hospital development plan to be prepared by the East Avenue Medical Center and implemented by the Department of Health, with funding programmed through the General Appropriations Act and positions created, coordinated with DBM and the Civil Service Commission. Capacity, people, and money, all aligned. The expected returns are immediate and human: shorter emergency room and admission wait time, fewer diversion of ambulances, timelier surgeries, and chemotherapy, safer ratios for nurses and residents for poor and near poor household. This is also financial protection. When the public hospital has space, families are spared the catastrophic out-of-pocket costs of seeking care elsewhere or the silent cost of foregoing care altogether. We have also learned from the last expansion that this measure insists on sequencing and phasing, prioritize emergency room, ICU, and high-demand services first, commission units as they are ready and strengthen utilities: oxygen, power redundancy, infection prevention and control, so quality rises with quantity. It is aligned with the Philippine Health Facility Development Plan and treats East Avenue Medical Center not as an isolated build but as a hub in a resilient NCR referral network. Colleagues, we are not voting on concrete and steel. We are voting on time, the precious minutes an ER team needs to save lives. The days a child should not spend on a corridor bed, the months of treatment a cancer patient cannot keep postponing. 500 beds may read like a number on paper, but in reality, it is dignity reclaimed for our most vulnerable patients and sanity restored for the workforce that serves them. With humility and conviction, I ask for your support for House Bill 2069.
Thank you, Honorable Suntai. For House Bill Number 4109, 1,000 to 1,500 beds and appropriating funds therefore, by Honorable Keith Mica Attorney Mike Tan and Honorable Iris Marie de Mesa Montes. Honorable Mike Tan is now recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning po, sa ating lahat. In the interest of time, I requested the committee to adopt the explanatory note of House Bill Number 4109 as my sponsorship speech. However, allow me to stress the importance of passing this legislative measure. The hospital's admissions and utilization have grown significantly in recent years. Inpatient admissions rose from 22,925 in 2021 to 39,066 in 2024, with 2025 projections exceeding 44,000 based on current trends. With an anticipated inpatient service days of 463,877 and a maintained average length of stay of 11 days, the current authorized bed capacity of 1,000 to 1,200 will result in unsustainable bed occupancy rate of 105.91%. Aside from the more than 70% of EAMC's patient volume which comes from NCR, I would like to emphasize that 16% of the patient volume comes from Region 4A and 6% from Region 3. Although there is a clear majority which favors those in Metro Manila, the increase in EAMC's bed capacity will still benefit yu aming pong mga kababayan from Quezon. Emphasizing the natural reach of EAMC, this confirms its critical role in fulfilling the Philippine Health Facility Development Plan Directive that tertiary and specialty care hospitals should serve communities within a 3-hour access window. The continued expansion of EAMC and the growing demand for services give rise to the urgent and further upgrade of its capacity. Such increase of EAMC's authorized bed capacity to 1,500 will not only help address congestion, improve patient outcomes, and support public health goals, but will also solidify EAMC's role as a truly national institution in the delivery of specialized healthcare services. It is for these reasons that approval of this measure is earnestly sought. Having said that, Mr. Chairman, your honors, I am counting on your support for the expeditious approval of this measure. Thank you po.
Thank you very much, Honorable Tan.
Mr. Chair, as for House Bill Number 382...
We now tackle the last local bill, House Bill Number 382, an act increasing the bed capacity of East Avenue Medical Center in Quezon City from 1,000 to 1,500 beds and appropriating funds therefore, by Honorable Juan Carlos Arjo Atide. In his behalf, we now recognize Honorable Tan for the sponsorship speech.
Mr. Chairman, on behalf of Representative Juan Carlos Arjo Atide, I move that the explanatory note of House Bill Number 382 be adopted as his sponsorship speech.
Thank you, Honorable Tan. Before we... Yes, I'd like to acknowledge firstly the presence of our Vice Chair, Honorable Larni Lavinroque from the 4th District of Bukidnon. Thank you. Yes, Honorable...
Pancho po.
Pancho.
Mr. Chair, I support House Bill 3822069 and 4109. Malaking tulong po ito sa Province of Bulakan, especially in my district, Second District. So, I endorse the increased bed capacity of East Avenue Medical Center. Thank you po, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Pancho.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. East Avenue Medical Center has a bed occupancy rate of 120% in 2024, significantly exceeding the ideal range of 80 to 85%. Likewise, inpatient visits and emergency department visits are progressively increasing. In line with RA 11561, the bed capacity of EAMC was increased from 600 to 1,000 in 2021 with an upgrade in services. The hospital is set to further expand its bed capacity and services from 2020 to 2025 in accordance with the implementing rules and regulations of the law, and also in view of the establishment of specialty centers pursuant to the Regional Specialty Centers Act or RA 11561. or RA11959. Given the increasing demand for services, the Department of Health fully supports the proposed expansion. As an apex hospital, the East Avenue serves not only the National Capital Region but also the healthcare provider networks in other regions. The DOH also concurs that this expansion shall be supported by investments in infrastructure, equipment, and personnel to meet the licensing standards and ensure continued quality care. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Director Melissa.
Sir Chair.
Ah, yes, Honorable...
Veloso.
Veloso.
Okay, Mr. Chair. I would like to express my full support for the upgrading of East Avenue Medical Center as one of the country's major government referral hospitals. Strengthening its facilities, expanding its bed capacity, and enhancing its service capabilities are essential in fulfilling the mandates of universal healthcare and zero-balance billing. That's all, Mr. Chair. Congratulations, East Avenue.
Thank you, Honorable Gurli Veloso. We now recognize the Medical Center Chief, Dr. Alfonso Nunez III of the East Avenue Medical Center.
Honorable Suriakwagato, the Chairperson of the Committee on Health, all the members of the Committee on Health. Magandang umaga po sa inyong lahat. Thank you for the invitation. We are sincerely grateful for the opportunity to be included in your discussion. East Avenue Medical Center remains steadfast in its commitment to providing accessible and high-quality healthcare services for the Filipino people. We are continuously expanding our services and enhancing our specialty centers to accommodate the needs of our patients. Increasing the hospital's bed capacity will greatly aid in our mission. We wholeheartedly support House Bill number 3822069 and 4109 as increasing our bed capacity will strengthen our capabilities and expand our ability to serve the community. As a matter of concept, the East Avenue Medical Center is now constructing a six-story hospital, I mean, a six-story building to be connected to the main hospital and the annexed hospital. This new hospital is envisioned to be able to serve an additional 300 patients and expand our operating services, I mean, the operating rooms by 50%, our ICU beds by 50% also. Our delivery room and capacity to cater to deliveries and complicated deliveries by another 50%. Our ER, we envision the new building to accommodate another 10% of the additional ER patients. And as a matter of information for the committee, Mr. Chair, in two to three years, there are upcoming specialty programs that is now being implemented and being expanded and being improved. Like, for example, maybe in the next two to three years, we are able to do open-heart surgery, do bone marrow transplant, and even kidney transplant. These are all requirements and feedback from our clients. And we are in pursuit of this for us to be truly an apex hospital for the Filipino people. We are truly grateful to our sponsors, Honorable Suntay, Honorable Attorney Mike Tan, Honorable Montez, for supporting sa inyong pagtitiwala at paniniwala sa East Avenue Medical Center and the Committee on Health for our work sa Filipino people. As a side note, we also support other hospital bills that further capacitate other DOH hospitals because we truly believe that the improvement of one should be the improvement of all. We value this opportunity to collaborate and strengthen our health system. Magandang umaga po sa inyong lahat.
Thank you very much, Dr. Alfonso Nunez, from the Department of Budget and Management. Ms. Joy.
Mr. Chair, respectfully reiterating the earlier manifestation in application to House Bills numbered 3822069 and 4109. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Joy. Honorable Aquino... Ah, yes, Honorable Goreseta.
As... Ako nalang kong...
Thank you, Honorable Aquino.
Or ako. Ako muna kong... Sorry.
Ladies first.
Ay, shige po ako. Thank you. Yeah, as a fellow government medical consultant from Western Visayas Medical Center, I think I am also fully aware and very much oriented with our problems regarding bed capacity. And I have personally sent my medical residents also to East Avenue, so hopefully we could work together, sir. I could send my medical residents for training in East Avenue. So I extend my full support. Kasi si Kong, Aquino nalang daw magmove for approval. I fully support of the bills of 38022069 and 4109 of increasing the bed capacity of Easter Medical Center. Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Goreseta. Honorable Aquino.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We've heard a lot from the different sectors of the medical, especially from the last one, a doctor herself. And with this, Mr. Chair, I would like to move for an omnibus motion for the last three bills to be approved. Yes, as... Red, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, may I likewise move that all members present be considered as co-authors of this consolidated bill?
Let's approve firstly the motion and then we'll go to the other motion.
Second.
Consolidated, all these three...
There's a Julie seconded motion that House Bills number 3822069 and 4109 be consolidated, subject to style and amendment. Hearing no objection, the same is approved.
Yeah, I reiterate my motion that all members present be considered as co-authors, with indulgence, of course, of the authors.
There's a Julie seconded motion that all those present who wishes to be co-authors of House Bill number 3822069 and 4109 be made co-authors. Hearing no objection, the same is approved. That finishes our deliberation on our local bills. Yes. The Chair declares a one-minute suspension for the resource person on the local bills to be excused. And then after one minute, we will now proceed with the deliberation of the national bills. Thank you. We'll start in 30 seconds. Meeting is now resumed. Before we proceed, we'd like to acknowledge the presence of a committee member, Honorable Leandro Legarda Leviste of the 1st District of Patangas. Thank you. We proceed with the committee deliberation on bills authorizing the Department of Health to set and approve the bed capacity and service capability of DOH hospitals. First is House Bill number 1398, an act authorizing the Department of Health to set and approve the bed capacity and service capability of all DOH retained hospitals by Hon. Maximo Dalug Jr. Honorable Dalug is now recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In the interest of time, I move that my explanatory note on House Bill number 1398 be adopted as my sponsorship speech. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Dalug. Next is House Bill number 1528, an act authorizing the Department of Health to set and approve the bed capacity of all DOH hospitals by Hon. Keith Maica Attorney Mike Tan. Honorable Tan is now recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning po ulit sa ating lahat. Presently, a DOH hospital can only increase its bed capacity through legislation. This means requests to serve more patients, especially the poor, must compete with thousands of bills, often leaving hospitals waiting until the need has already outgrown the law. By allowing the DOH to administratively set and approve the authorized bed capacity of its hospitals, we remove one barrier that impedes the efficient delivery of health service. This bill seeks to address the congestion of patients in public hospitals by authorizing the DOH to increase the bed capacity of its retained hospitals and allowing it to promulgate guidelines that will be used in evaluating and approving changes in bed capacity. Having said that, Mr. Chairman, your honors, I'm counting on your support for the approval of this measure. Thank you po.
Thank you, Honorable Tan. Next is House Bill number 3510, an act authorizing the Department of Health to set and approve the bed capacity of all DOH hospitals by Hon. Edsel Galios. In his behalf, we now recognize Hon. Antonino Romano III to deliver his sponsorship speech.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On behalf of Representative Edsel Galios, I adopt the explanatory notes as his sponsorship speech.
Thank you very much.
And then perhaps I can do for the next two bills. I know I'm leapfrogging, but if it's okay, I'll do that. In the absence of the respective sponsors of bills, preferring... For House Bill 3596, Mr. Chair, if possible, also for House Bill 3776 and also House Bill 4932. I move that the explanatory notes for these bills be considered the sponsorship speech of the respective authors, namely Representative Nathaniel Odohado for House Bill 3596, Representative P.M. Vargas for House Bill 3776, and also for my bill, House Bill 4932. I so move, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Roman. Next is House Bill number... House Bill number 4646, an act authorizing the Department of Health to set and approve the bed capacity and service capability of all DOH hospitals and for other purposes by Hon. Ferdinand Martin G. Romaldes, Hon. Yada Marie Romaldes, and Hon. Andrew Julian Romaldes, and Hon. Jude Asidre. And in their behalf, we now recognize Hon. Pancho for the sponsorship speech.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move that the explanatory note of House Bill number 4646 be adopted as the sponsorship remarks of Representatives Ferdinand Martin Romaldes, Yada Marie Romaldes, Andrew Romaldes, and Jude Asidre. Thank you po, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Hon. Pancho. And the last bill on upgrading is House Bill number 5235, an act authorizing the Department of Health to set and approve the bed capacity and service capability of all DOH hospitals and for other purposes by Hon. Agay Cruz. Hon. Cruz is now recognized.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. And again, in the interest of time, I also move that the explanatory note for House Bill number 5235 be adopted as the sponsorship speech of the said measure and, of course, request all the members of the committee to support all the bills on empowering our Department of Health with the necessary flexibility to respond to the needs in accordance with the service capabilities of all our public hospitals. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So move.
Thank you, Hon. Cruz. We now recognize Director Melissa from the Department of Health.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Department of Health fully supports the intent of aforementioned House Bills which seek to authorize the DOH to set and approve the bed capacity and service capability of all DOH hospitals. In fact, it is one of our priority bills, part of our health executive agenda for legislation. Currently, it is only through legislation that a DOH hospital can increase its bed capacity and improve its service capability. There have been times that such legislative proposals were not approved or when they were approved, the needs of the respective catchment population have already evolved. Thus, there is a need to expedite the process of approving the capacity and capability of DOH hospitals. With this, the proposed measures shall help in accelerating the implementation of the Philippine Health Facility Development Plan and complementing the performance of a city and provincial health system as mandated by the Universal Healthcare Act. In view of the foregoing, the DOH supports the bills authorizing the Department in setting the bed capacity and service capability of all DOH hospitals and forwards the following comments and recommendations. For terminology, the term DOH retained hospital shall be changed to DOH hospitals to accurately reflect all health facilities under the Department's direct supervision and control, including renationalized hospitals. Second is the recommendation for House Bill number 4932, particularly in Section 4, Basis for Bed Capacity Adjustment, instead of enumerating specific conditions for increasing... Instead of enumerating specific conditions for increasing the bed capacity of DOH hospitals, the provision may be stated more broadly to articulate the guiding policy principles. The detailed criteria, procedures, and operational requirements may then be provided in the implementing rules and regulations, allowing for greater flexibility and adaptability to evolving health system needs. In Section 5, with regard to phased expansion, the DOH already applies evidence-based planning and prioritization in determining hospital bed capacity and service levels through the Philippine Health Facility Development Plan 2020 to 2040, and phased implementation naturally results from this process. Therefore, this section may be removed. And in Section 9, Emergency and Temporary Search Capacity, most DOH hospitals operate above their ideal bed occupancy rates, and search capacity has routinely been managed as part of standard hospital operations and emergency response protocols. Therefore, this section may also be removed. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Director Melissa. Please submit your position paper to this committee.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Hon. Roman.
Since Director Melissa mentioned House Bill 4932, which is the bill that I authored, first, she wanted a broader sort of a set of criteria for just to authorize the increase of bed capacity administratively, no? Because you mentioned that Section 4 details or lists the criteria. What kind of criteria do you have in mind? What's the wording?
Mr. Chair, we recommend that the explicit criteria stated in the bill be moved to the implementing rules and regulation.
Mr. Chair, I think that would be legally infirmed if you did that because this is... The power to increase bed capacity is lodged with Congress. So what we're effectively doing is that we're delegating this duty to hospitals so that it can do so administratively. For a delegation of legislative duty to be valid, there has to be a criteria under the law. That it's first, the bill is complete in itself, and that the criteria is sufficient. In other words, we have to give the parameters or the guardrails for the exercise of administrative power to increase bed capacity, and that's the reason behind Section 4. Otherwise, we are vulnerable to a challenge, a challenge that it is an undue delegation of legislative power. And so what I have attempted in 4932 is to identify what I think are reasonable bases to increase bed capacity. The 85% is aligned with WHO standards, above which it is considered unsafe, right, at 85%? The population-to-bed ratio, I'm aligning it with WHO standards. And then there is a provision for allowance for significant changes in disease burden, so you can respond accordingly, and the other conditions as may be identified in assessments and actuarial studies. So with that clarification, I mean, I'd like to hear from the DOH whether it's amenable to adopting Section 4 or revising it so that, you know, it gives it more leeway to make the adjustments in bed capacity.
Director Sena.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Given the explanation of, um, Congressman as author of RA 49... Ah, House Bill 4932, then the DOH may consider and interpose no objection to inclusion of Section 4 in the consolidated bill. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, another point that she raised is a phased expansion. She recommended the deletion of Section 5 because she's saying it's already being done. Actually, it's the reverse. If it's already being done, why would you move for its deletion? If you want it institutionalized, if you feel that a phased implementation and prioritization makes sense, right, because it's being done currently, why would you move for its deletion? With more reason, you should support it.
Yes, Mr. Chair. We will support.
Same thing with Section 8. She says that it's being done, the prioritization... I'm sorry, with respect to emergency and temporary search capacity, which is a practical response, right? If the situation calls for adjustment in bed capacity to respond to temporary surges and emergency, right? So what is the objection? Why would you remove, move for its deletion? If that is a sensible response?
Mr. Chair, because it's already part of standard hospital operation protocols.
Therefore, is there any...
There's nothing wrong with indicating or explicitly writing it.
Thank you.
Do I take it that you are withdrawing the objection to Section 9?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
I think it was not a total objection. It was a suggestion from the Department of Health. So it's really at tayo parin naman naman.
Until...
During the consolidation.
Yes, they were objecting to it and asking for its removal. So I'm just saying, if they're reconsidering, it's good to hear that they have reconsidered. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
From the DBM, Ms. Joy.
Good morning again, Mr. Chair. May we manifest our initial comments, Mr. Chair? Considering that the formulation of pertinent policies to effectively implement the relevant health programs, including the determination of the necessary infrastructure and health facilities, is within the mandate of the DOH, we interpose no objection to the proposal authorizing the DOH to determine the bed capacities of its DOH retained hospitals in order to streamline the said process, subject to the inputs of other appropriate agencies with technical, functional, and legal jurisdiction on the matter. If granted authority, there is a need for the DOH to ensure that proposals to increase bed capacities shall be consistent with the existing regulations, licensing, health improvement, and other related policies, standards, guidelines, and criteria being adopted by the Department of the different health facilities. Nevertheless, please take into account that the upgrading of the bed capacities of hospitals entails an increase in their respective operational cost, since the facility shall be upgraded to adhere with the existing standards, criteria, and requirements being prescribed by the DOH. Further, the creation of the necessary organizational units and positions that will be provided for the upgraded hospitals or medical centers shall be evaluated by the DBM based on existing organizational standards for hospitals. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Joy. Honorable Hasim.
Mr. Chair, I move for the consolidation and approval of the eight House bills, namely, House Bill Number 1398, 1528, 3510, 3596, 3776, 4646, 4932, and 5235. Thank you.
Second, Mr. Chair.
There's a duly seconded motion that to approve the consolidated version of House Bill Number 1398, 1528, 3510, 3596, 3776, 4646, 4932, and 5235. Hearing no objection, the same is approved. Yes, Hon. Roman.
Mr. Chair, I just see clarification from the DOH. I noticed that for most of the bills, it only covers DOH hospitals, correct? But the Director Melissa, Senya, also mentioned retained hospitals. Was it you who mentioned? There was mention of retained hospitals, which are basically provincial hospitals. The same, yon.
I think what Director Melissa mentioned earlier was to change the DOH retained hospital into DOH hospital to avoid confusion.
Oh, I see. So, okay, so then my question is, does the DOH have authority to change the bed capacity of provincial hospitals?
No, Mr. Chair.
Not in this bill.
Not in this bill. Is there... And this, I think it would make sense. I'm just throwing it out there. I'd like to hear from you whether... Let me rephrase the question. If a provincial hospital wants to increase bed capacity, does it need any approval or certification or endorsement from DOH?
Generally, no, Mr. Chair. It depends on the enabling law of the provincial hospital. If the increase in bed capacity of the provincial hospital, the latest policy is a Republic Act, then it is another Republic Act to amend or to increase its bed capacity. If the latest enabling law of the provincial hospital is a sangguniang panglalawigan resolution, then it doesn't need the Republic Act. Because the hospital is a provincial hospital, then sangguniang panglalawigan resolution will suffice, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
I have a follow-up question, Mr. Chair. Just bear with me. If the Enabling Act gives the authority... In other words, if you look at the statute itself that was passed and approved as law, gives the authority to DOH to increase the bed capacity, don't you think it should be covered as well?
Mr. Chair, may I see clarification? To increase bed capacity of provincial hospitals?
Yes.
We will not support the measure because it is the province or the LGUs that know best their situations in their catchment population, and they are the entity providing budget for the said provincial hospital. Therefore, it is best left in the hands of the local government unit that operates the hospital to determine whether an increase in bed capacity is warranted. The Department of Health's role is in regulation. The issuance of a license to operate based on the capacity of the hospital, the fixed assets and the human resource complement of the facility. There are numerous instances that the authorized bed capacity by law of a health facility is different from the authorized bed capacity by license because the license to operate, as issued by the Department of Health, is based on the capacity of the facility. Therefore, the ABC by license is sometimes lower than the ABC set by law. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I have a specific hospital in mind, Mr. Chair. The Republic Act is 11888. It's increasing the bed capacity of the Orani District Hospital in my district. Now, Section 1 of that law mentions any future increase. So any future increase in bed capacity shall be prepared by the chief of hospital, blah blah blah, and submitted to the DOH. So my understanding is that there is a referral or deferral or deference given to the DOH with respect to future increase in bed capacity. So I wonder whether the pending legislation, the consolidated legislation that we're going to approve would include also this hospital by virtue of Section 1, which says any future increase in bed capacity shall be prepared by the chief of the hospital and submitted to the DOH?
Mr. Chair, the proposed bills authorizing the Department of Health to increase the bed capacity only covers Department of Health hospitals. With regard to the hospital in Orani, which provides that any increase in bed capacity shall be submitted to the Department of Health, it shall be the basis of our Health Facilities and Services Regulatory Bureau, the bureau that issues the license to operate. It should be the basis in assessment of the hospital and issuance of the said license to operate. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Okay. So everything is clarified. Will we now recognize... Yes, Hon. Roque.
Pwede na ba? With the permission of the authors, may I move that all the members present in this committee meeting be considered co-author of the said consolidated bill, Mr. Chair?
Before you act on the motion for co-authorship, let's act on the motion to approve. Yeah, tapos na pala. Yes. So there's a duly seconded motion that all those present who wishes to be co-authors of these bills be made co-authors. Hearing objection, the same is approved.
The resource persons for the upgrading of hospitals may now be excused. Thank you very much. We now proceed with the deliberation on bills amending Republic Act Number 11166, otherwise known as the Philippine HIV and AIDS Policy Act. First and the least is House Bill Number 690, an act allowing mature minors ages 16 to 17 to avail of antiretroviral therapy without parental consent, amending for the purpose of Republic Act Number 11166, otherwise known as the Philippine HIV and AIDS Policy Act as amended by Hon. Javier Miguel Lopez Benitez. In behalf of Hon. Benitez, Hon. Suntay is now recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In behalf of Representative Javier Miguel Benitez, may I move that the explanatory note for House Bill Number 690 be admitted as his sponsorship speech of the bill?
Thank you, Hon. Suntay. We now move to House Bill Number 4120, entitled an act providing access to antiretroviral therapy to children ages above 15 years old, amending for the purpose the Republic Act Number 11166, otherwise known as the Philippine HIV and AIDS Policy Act as amended by Hon. John Atoney JP Padernos. In his behalf, Hon. Bong Suntay is now recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, may I move, in behalf of Representative Rurik Padernos, may I move that his explanatory note be considered as his sponsorship speech for House Bill Number 4120?
Thank you, Hon. Suntay. We now... Before we proceed, we'd like to acknowledge the presence of a committee member, Hon. Alexander T.P. Mantel of the 2nd District of Surigao del Sur. Thank you. We now recognize from Department of Health Dr. Anna Marie Selena Garfin, Director for Disease Prevention and Control Bureau.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good morning, everyone. So Republic Act 1166, also known as the Philippine HIV and AIDS Policy Act of 2018, provides an important exception to the general rule under Civil Code that grants legal capacity only to Filipinos who are 18 years old and above. So the law, particularly Section 29 of RA 11166, allows the right of the young... allows the right of the Yankee population, specifically 15 years to below 18 years and minors below 15 who are pregnant or engaged in what the law considers high-risk behavior to undergo HIV testing, provided that they are assisted by a licensed social worker or healthcare provider, professional. So, access to HIV testing of minors are based on the principles in the International Convention on the Rights of the Child, signed by the Philippine Government, the 1987 Constitution, the Philippine HIV and AIDS Policy Act, and Republic Act Number 7610, or the Special Protection of Children Against Abuse, Exploitation, and Discrimination Act. So, this act, or RA 7610, aims to safeguard children from various forms of harm and emphasizes several guiding principles. First would be the principle of evolving capacities of the child, which acknowledges that as children go, their cognitive abilities and sense of self-determination develop, allowing them to make more autonomous decisions. The second is the mature minor doctrine, which recognizes that certain minors possess sufficient understanding of medical procedures and their implications, enabling them to consent independently to such procedures when assessed by qualified professionals. So, just to inform the group that currently HIV incidence in the Philippines among the Yankee populations is at an alarming level. So, according to the latest data from the HIV and AIDS Surveillance Philippines, diagnosed HIV cases are getting younger. So, with the prominent predominant age group shifting from among 35 to 49 years old, that is in 2002 to 2005, to 25 to 34 years, starting 2006. Among age groups, the highest increase in the proportion of cases in the past five years are among those below 15 years old, about 80%.
Below 15?
15, yes, sir. Below 15. Below 15. Yes, that is about 80%, followed by those aged 15 to 24 years. So, pabata po ng pabata 'yung mga may HIV. So, later, we can ask the Epidemiology Bureau to provide the details of the data on HIV. So, in response, the enactment of RA 1166, 11166, prioritize scaling up access to HIV prevention and treatment services for minors by removing barriers such as consent from parents or guardians, among others. So, with this, we support House Bill 690 and 4120 that proposes allowing minors to avail of anti-retroviral therapy without consent. Because in our RA 11166, the exception there is only for testing. But for treatment, it's not included. That's why we are supporting that we also provide treatment without, among minors, without parental consent. So, denying minors' access to HIV treatment, which involves undergoing anti-retroviral therapy, constitutes child abuse. So, through the efforts of the member agencies of the Philippine National AIDS Council, or that is PINAC, led by the Department of Health as its chair, our country's HIV and AIDS program guarantees link to treatment, care, and support. So, available na po 'yung services that we link from testing or the whole treatment, care, and support is being provided. So, Section 33 of RA 11166 mandates that DOH to establish a program that ensures treatment, care, and support for all people living with HIV without discrimination. So, therefore, minors who test positive for HIV must be linked to and provided with the same treatment and care as adults. So, to deny them this right not only violates the law, but also endangers their health and well-being. So, the services without consent should be for both testing and treatment, and not just testing. So, further, the DOH recommends the following. For the DILG, through the local government units to establish or to strengthen the local government unit's Local AIDS Council or similar governance bodies to oversee the institutionalization and implementation of policies, focusing on the testing and treatment of minors aged 15 to below 18 years and minors below 15 years who are pregnant and are engaged in high-risk behaviors. So, for DOH also to ensure the provision of uninterrupted access to testing and treatment for minors through the procurement of adequate supplies of HIV diagnostic tests and pediatric anti-retroviral medications, as well as the utilization of the outpatient HIV and AIDS treatment package of Philhealth. Then, DOH should also ensure linkage or continuity of treatment, care, and care for these minors from the social hygiene clinics and HIV treatment hubs to agencies providing social services and peer support, such as those of the Department of Social Welfare and Development and DOH-accredited community-based organizations. So, we also need to strengthen monitoring and evaluation of child's physical, mental, and psychosocial well-being and ensuring surveillance and data-sharing mechanisms among health facilities and establish referral pathways with concerned agencies. So, data is very important so that our actions are based on evidence. So, proper counseling from licensed social workers or professionals for the parents or guardians of the minors, encouraging them to provide necessary family support to the minor. And should the minor choose to disclose their status or if in the event, the family happens to gain knowledge of the situation. And lastly, prioritize research initiatives on the exploration of innovations and health technologies related to HIV testing and treatment of minors. So, we need to implement innovations to address this challenge. So, HIV and AIDS prevention and treatment are governed by our Philippine HIV and AIDS Policy Act. So, it explicitly states that treatment is a right of all PLHIVs. So, excluding minors would be discriminatory and contrary to the objectives of public health. Given that HIV incidence among individuals below 15 years of age has increased and among those aged 15 to 24 years. So, it is critical from the public health perspective to ensure that minors have immediate access for testing and treatment. So, this is all. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Garfin. We now recognize the Director Jana Manatad of the Epidemiology Bureau of DOH.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, everyone. The HIV cases in the Philippines continues to increase, particularly among adolescents. Over the past decade, there has been a steady rise in reported HIV-related deaths. According to the 2022 Integrated HIV Behavioral Stereologic Surveillance, young people are engaging in high-risk behaviors at an early age, yet the delay practicing safe sex and accessing HIV-related services. This troubling trend is compounded by a lack of comprehensive knowledge among the youth regarding HIV prevention, transmission, and available services. Many adolescents do not fully grasp the consequences of risky sexual behavior, which perpetuates the cycle of rising infections. To address this, it is essential to guide young people towards safer sexual practices through comprehensive reproductive health education and improve access to HIV-related services. However, sociocultural barriers continue to hinder the effective implementation of HIV services. To reduce the growing burden of HIV among the youth, interventions must be youth-centered and responsive to their specific needs. Reproductive health education should aim to provide appropriate and correct information that would enable positive attitudes and behaviors related to reproductive health, HIV, and sexually transmitted infection. By equipping adolescents with accurate information, this will empower them to make informal decisions, understand the risk of unsafe sex, and recognize the importance of prevention, testing, and treatment. Shewing national guidelines for the implementation of age-appropriate health education is critical to ensure that all young people receive consistent, high-quality education that is relevant to their experiences and development. Equally important is the expansion of youth-friendly service delivery, particularly for HIV testing, counseling, and treatment. It is critical that individuals who test positive for HIV are immediately linked to appropriate care and treatment services. This includes minors who must be able to access HIV testing, diagnosis, and treatment without requiring parental consent. Early intervention is essential to improve health outcome, reduce transmission, and uphold the rights of young people to confidential and timely medical care. Addressing stigma, discrimination, and abuse while improving access to youth-appropriate services is essential to creating an environment where adolescents can seek help without fear. A right-based, culturally-based, inclusive, and evidence-informed approach is key to turning the tide of the HIV alarming situation in the country. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Director Manatad. Dr. Joselito Feliciano of the Philippine National AIDS Council is now recognized.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, and to the members of the honorable committee. While the law permits minors to be tested on HIV without parental consent, it does not extend the same authority to treatment and to avail other HIV and AIDS services, placing these youth at risk after diagnosis. So, for the council, the council's position is to seek the support of the Congress through this honorable committee to amend and clarify the RA 11166, or the Philippine HIV and AIDS Policy Act, for the youth to be able to access HIV treatment, prevention, and other related services. Thank you, Honorable.
Thank you, Dr. Feliciano. From the Department of Social Welfare and Development, Attorney Anthony Imokling.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, to the members of the committee, to our fellow resource persons and guests. Magandang umaga po. The Department of Social Welfare and Development commends the author of this important legislation. The DSWD affirms its strong support for its immediate passage as a necessary measure to protect the life and health of Filipino youth facing this HIV epidemic. The DSWD has programs for persons that has HIV, such as psychosocial support and other non-health-related support programs and assistance. Mr. Chair, as to our comment with regards to the age, the DSWD leans towards the age of 15 to below 18 years old as a threshold to have the anti-retroviral treatment without parental consent. This is to align with other laws and programs. Mr. Chair, we also defer to the expertise of the Department of Health and other agencies that are expert in the matter. We will send our official position paper once it is signed by our secretary. Thank you.
Thank you. From the Council for Welfare of Children, Mr. Sergio Nipomosen.
Makabata ang umaga po sa lahat. Chairperson Gato at sa lahat po ng member ng August body na ito at ang mga taga DOH for the National AIDS Council from the DSWD. While the CWC is in a positive view towards the support for the passage of these legislations, recognizing the importance for every child to the right to proper medical attention, specifically the anti-retroviral therapy, and all the basic physical requirements of a healthy and vigorous life, and further to ensure that every child, regardless of ability and condition, can communicate and participate and nurture its own society as a fully participating citizen regardless of having HIV or AIDS. This very much aligns with full protection and best interest of the child. Yung posisyon namin, we are always with the best interest of the child. Having said that, we will be submitting po our position as soon as it is signed by our director po. So, sir, the CWC is really very happy about this because we are able to have a more comprehensive protection. And, you know, we support this legislation. Salamat po.
Thank you, Mr. Nipomoseno. From the Philhealth, Dr. Lala Sabido.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, honorable members of Congress, and everybody here. Good morning. Philhealth does not hold any qualms or objections with regards to both House Bills Number 690 and 4120. The cost, it supports the UHC Act, and the cost is, of course, notable. Our disposition, however, on these two House bills are with regards to a request for clarificatory provision as to whether this statement of "without parental consent" translates to the emancipation from parental authority as provided in the Family Code and RA 6809, and whether this provision on "without parental consent" is strictly for this service or whether it expands to other healthcare services. Because, Mr. Chair, right now, our database already shows that we have minors with HIV confined due to complications from the disease. And right now, we still require informed consent from the parents or guardians. So, we would like to know specifically whether this provision on "without parental consent" will actually translate to such. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Asabido. Unfortunately, our authors are not present. But the title, in the title, it's very, I think it's very clear that this is specifically for AIDS patients, at least from the title.
Mr. Chair? Can I comment, Mr. Chair? So, again, good morning, everyone. Mr. Chair, I just have several comments regarding the bills of 690 and 4120. So, as a former chairman of our HIV Treatment Hub at Western Visayas Medical Center in Region 6, actually, I do counseling, ma'am, for HIV patients. And actually, I handle adults, adult patients. So, in counseling, I counsel both the patient and the family members. Because when we do treatment, it should be a holistic approach. Mas kiho mga 18 years old and above. I think mentally, emotionally, and spiritually, parang hindi nila kaya. Hindi nila kaya. Of course, you know, the process, the process of having... the process of having an HIV and then having been treated for HIV and then yung very important is how do they, um, parang treat the, the disease itself. So with regards to the minors, number one, the, the bill states that it is an act allowing mature minors ages sixteen to seventeen. So when you say mature, how do we quantify or qualify mature? Uh, ako, I have, uh, friends from the Pedia Infectious who also treats HIV, um, pediatric patients as young as nine years old. Yeah, five to nine years old. Some of them were molested, some of them were raped. Of course, our early pregnancies. So when we do psychiatric exams, they always fail, siyempre because of the trauma. So if even, you know, teenagers, no? They do, um, uh, they do, uh, for example, immoral acts, no? Having, uh, many multiple partners as young as twelve, thirteen, fourteen years old. And that act itself, I think that's very immature of them, still very immature of them. No, maybe they are not properly guided. So how much more if they get tested? Do they really understand what HIV is, you know? And then after the testing, paano po kung hindi sila gusto magpa-treat? And as a mother, hindi ko po, hindi ko po matik, well, God forbid, 'yung mga anak ko bang babata, paano? Now, when you know it, andyan na pala, no? And then you, you're not aware of it, you don't know kung ano lang nangyayari sa anak mo, bakit may HIV? You know, I think, parang ang dami lang gray area po for me, for me, ha? And then yung HIV kasi ngayon, you know, the stigma is still there. The stigma is still there. And then our, I don't think we have fully maximized po yung prevention, preventive measures natin. So I think, and then knowing the social media now, you know, I have patients who are suicidal and these are adults, ma'am, ha? Adults, how much more than minors? Now, we have like, you know, several cases of suicide also. So, um, yun lang po, 'yung mga gusto kong itanong, how can we qualify or quantify mature minors, no? And then number two, I think we should have further studies. Is it really advantageous for us to approve this bill? Does this like have an effect in our disease prevention? Diba? And then number three, with regards to treatment po, is there a difference if we will not have apparent consent with regards to testing and the treatment as to as to, um, for example, that, that there should be a consent talaga before the treatment and before the testing? Because I don't think this fifteen, sixteen, seventeen-year-old population understand what is really happening with them. So yun lang naman po, I think we should have further studies. No, if it will not affect anything about their treatment, about, you know, our prevention, I don't think we have to really, you know, impose this bill and then approve this bill if ever po. Yun lang naman sa akin. Thank you so much.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Honorable Roman.
I'm here in a guest capacity only of, of the, because of the bill is sponsored, but um, the, the comments from the, the resource persons speak my curiosity. So may I ask a question?
Yes, please.
No, um, why, I understand you want to dispense with parental consent, right? I just want to make sure we are on the same page. You want to dispense with parental consent. I was wondering, what, what is the thought behind that? Why do you want to dispense with parental consent when it's actually, I would think from a legal point of view to your advantage, parental consent? Usually because there's a waiver that comes with a parental consent. Like even if they are in, uh, 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 necessary procedures, medical procedures, for example, prior to operation. If the patient is a minor, he would get the consent of the guardian. Why? Because there is a waiver of liability. So I was thinking, it's actually to your advantage to get the consent with the accompanying waiver. Li- liability limitation, liability waiver. So what was the reason behind that? Just so I understand.
Uh, anyone? Yes, Doctor, Doctor Garfin.
Chair, uh, let me clarify first, no? The RA one existing, no, RA states that there's already an exemption for the parental consent for testing. Age fifteen, parang age fifteen to below eighteen, you can do the testing without consent. Okay? What is lacking here is the treatment component. Because why do we test? Isn't it for, it is for us to provide treatment. In the law, we already state that there is an exception to the testing, but there's no mention regarding treatment. That's why we are agreeing that there will be, uh, without parental consent for the treatment. That's the, uh, ano, context. So for the other, uh, details, we have, uh, Director Jojo to provide other context.
Doctor Feliciano.
Okay. Uh, just for a context po. So before the passage of RA 1166, based on evidence, based on data, mas ma- dumadami po ang cases natin na below eighteen years old. And, uh, these cases are not being, uh, put into treatment or not being diagnosed dahil of course, they will not be coming to test if they have this risky behavior together with their parents. So that's the reason why nagkaroon po ng ganung provision yung RA uh, para i-accept yung fifteen years old to eighteen. Dahil dumadami po 'yung cases nga natin noon, no? At hindi natin sila nagagamot. However, with the passage of the RA 1166, uh, it didn't specify. It says that fifteen years old can have their, uh, can be tested without parental or parental consent or guardian. However, the law did not specify na pwede rin dapat siyang matreat. And currently what is happening is we've been diagnosing, uh, children at the age of fifteen years old and eighteen years old below. Madami po ito, no? So currently with the current, uh, data, forty-six percent of, uh, those cases are coming from fifteen, forty-six percent from this, uh, new cases are coming from fifteen to twenty-four years old. So now we are here, uh, asking for the amendment nga po na to, uh, to allow the treatment without consent dun sa mga nadadiagnosed natin na fifteen years old na mga bata. Dahil siyempre, ang concern natin is, uh, mas nadidili ang treatment, mas dumadami ang mga infection, mas nadadali po silang, uh, magkaroon ng, nadadali silang mapunta dun sa AIDS na stage, no?
Yes, Honorable Roman.
Just a follow-up lang. Um, I just wanted to, to probe um, the range of what's acceptable to you, okay? Um, how about, are you open to, instead of parental consent, just informing the parents?
Uh, for the RA 1166 po, we already have there for fifteen years old, uh, pwede siya without parental consent or guidance. Pero below fifteen, uh, pwede po siyang, um, if he's in a risky behavior. Kasi po mer- do we already have sex workers, no, uh, below fifteen years old? So if they are at risk, pwede po siyang magpa-test with the help of this, uh, DSWD or a licensed social worker at saka ng health worker. Pwede rin po siyang samahan nun, parang substitute for their parents. Kasi nga, uh, parang napakahirap para sa mga sex workers na mga bata na magpa-test na kasama 'yung parents nila with this condition.
Mr. Chair, help out parental notice. That's what I'm asking. Yeah, you're, you're not going to require parental consent. However, you will not, I represent Gorseta earlier about, uh, family support, which is essential to children in crisis. Um, how, how would they support their children if their parents don't know? I'm, I'm just, you know.
I think the dilemma really is, ano, in real, in real world. Um, how to address the delay in diagnosis and treatment? And one of the reasons why there are delays in, in diagnosis and treatment, siyempre, 'yung isang below eighteen, ayaw niyang malaman na magulang na, na high-risk siya or baka meron siya. At lalo na, kung nadiagnosed na siya, hindi niya sasabihin sa magulang 'yan. I mean, majority will not, uh, uh, will be, will be very hesitant to let the parents know or their guardians know. But on the other hand, the other side naman, as a parent, I would like to be informed that what is happening to my seventeen or uh, mabuti na lang, above eighteen na 'yung mga anak ko, but I would like to be informed what is happening with my child, I mean, below eighteen years old. So that's really a bal- balancing act. I, I do understand, I see the point of, uh, Honorable Gorseta, but at the same time, I also understand the point of the DUH and our resource person na talagang ang, ang prob- problema natin, lalo na sa below eighteen and there is a alarming rate of incidents of, uh, HIV is the, those with below eighteen. At dito, nangyayari nga 'yung, 'yung hesitancy or 'yung takot o 'yung fear ng bata to inform or much less, much more to ask permission from the parents or guardians to undergo diagnostic and therapeutic, uh, treatment. So yun, yun lang talagang napakahirap na, ano. Unfortunately, wala 'yung mga authors natin dito, so...
Can, can happen, uh, just a short, ano, a clear example po, ha? Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have this patient, twenty-three years old, he's gay. And then siyempre, wala ng consent, okay na, no, treatment and everything. So 'yung ano lang, 'yung kasama is the partner na matay because of AIDS, full-blown AIDS. And then siyempre, ako 'yung attending doctor, ako nag-explain sa parents, only to find out, they didn't know, they were not aware. Yung sinabi ng mother, sana kung sinabi niya lang, we were there to support him, we were there to be present for him. This was twenty-two or twenty-five years old. I think this, this happened like three years ago. So how much more for these teenagers? And I think the treatment is very important. As much as I want to prevent, of course, the disease spread of HIV, still I don't think this is really, um, for me uh, worth, um, what they call this, uh, passing. Yes, thank you.
Sabido.
Mr. Chair, uh, that's why, um, the contention of Philhealth actually sort of supports the Honorable Congressman, uh, Roman with that aspect. Because while this provision is clearly on an outpatient basis where parental support will not be needed for outpatient treatment with, with antiretrovirals, but at some point, it will be mahuhuli dyan, makacatch din siya kapag na-confined due to complications of the disease. And in that aspect, operationally, based on the law, we will still require parental consent. That's why our question was a while ago was, will, will the without parental consent translate to emancipation from parental authority eventually? Because, you know, at some point, when the patient gets confined, who happens to be a minor, if emancipated, we will not require any more parental consent. So yun lang po, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Before we proceed, we'd like to acknowledge the presence of a committee member, Honorable Timothy Joseph Kaiton of the Law and District of Nueva Vizcaya. Honorable Hasim.
Mr. Chair, I move for the creation of a TWG to discuss this very contentious issue, no? I just also want to add that I'm an obegayne, no? So this is really, this topic is close to my heart. And then I would like, there, um, with the motion for the creation of a TWG to further deliberate on the, the topic, um, may I ask also that the Department of Education be represented in that TWG? Kasi trabaho din ng mga educators na ma-inform din ng mga bata sa potential na pwede mangyari kung nagengage sila sa mga ganitong klaseng activities. Yun lang po, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Roque. We will, uh, take note of that. So there's a motion, uh, and Julie seconded that the creation of a TWG to, uh, to allow more, uh, discussion, um, uh, weighing both sides of the coin and come up with a, a truly representative, uh, substitute bill for this, uh, very, 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 very big problem that we are now facing, the alarming, uh, incidents and prevalence of, uh, HIV. So hearing the objection, uh, the motion to create, uh, TWG on House Bill, uh, 4120 and yeah, 690, um, is now approved. Um, and, uh, in line with this, uh, Honorable Gorseta is now ah, Honorable, Honorable Hasim, Honorable Hasim will, uh, head the TWG. Uh, and, uh, co-chair bid, uh...
Mr. Chair.
Honorable Gorseta and...
I also would like to be invited in the TWG.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any other matters? So there being no other matters to discuss, there's a motion. Second, Mr. Chair. Uh, hearing no objection, the same is approved. Maraming, maraming salamat, uh, colleagues and, uh, resource persons. Marami, thank you.